City Council, held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsythe.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
And we are here, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month. We did get everybody, didn't we? Okay, good. Whereas March is National Women's History Month, as designated by the United States Congress in 1987, this national observance encourages recognition and respect for women's vital role throughout American history. Whereas the celebration known as Women's History Week was a local event first held in Santa Rosa, California, the week of March 8th, 1978, to correspond with International Women's Day, with growing interest, a consortium of women's groups and historians led by the National Women's History Alliance successfully lobbied for national recognition. Whereas United States President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th, 1980, National Women's History Week, stating "The achievements, leadership, courage, strength, and love of the women who built America was vital, as that of the men whose names we know so well." Whereas in 1987, the United States Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetu- perpetuity, excuse me, requiring a special presidential proclamation to be issued yearly honoring American women's extraordinary achievements. The National Women's History Alliance selects and publishes a theme each year. Whereas the 2024 National Women's History Month theme is titled "Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion." Now therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as National Women's History Month, and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination from our lives and institutions. And with that, we're going to have a picture taken. Would you? Stand out. You're a little more.
Sure. Just stand next to each other. That's all right.
Sure. You stand on one side.
Okay.
Stand in front of it.
Whether everyone inside. That's good.
Charlie, Charlie, tell me.
Okay, we got it?
All right. See if we got it.
Okay.
A little bit more. Yes. For her, babe.
Whatever you say, Chip.
Okay. One, two. One more time. One, two.
Two and a half.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chip.
How you doing?
Can you hear? Oh, there we go. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinions of the City of Redmond, and as a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. Written comments have been distributed to the council, and there is one person that signed up to speak remotely. And I will let the audience know that we will be taking a recess just before 7:21 PM for Ramadan sunset, so that our council member can break his fast. And also, I know we have a full audience, and we have about 40 people who would like to speak tonight, and so I ask that the community members and the public, if they could be quiet, so that we can get through everyone's testimony and everyone can hear each other clearly. We'll start, I always read out the first four names or so, so you know who's coming up next. First, we have Brady Nordstrom, then Deb Young, then Kate Butt, then Jay Lowe, and then Bill King.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I work at Futurewise, but I'm here to speak on behalf of the Eastside Housing Roundtable. We began convening in 2021 as a broad coalition of local businesses, nonprofits, and private and nonprofit housing developers who recognize the urgent need to create more housing at every income level. That includes Redmond, and this coalition of unlikely partners may not agree on everything, and in fact, there's a lot of things that we disagree on, but we do agree that there's a deep need for all housing. That goes from market rate all the way down to permanent supportive housing. We need it all. And so we thank Redmond City Council for taking quick action in February to pursue the transfer of land to Plymouth Housing. We believe that this saved critical funding that was at risk of being lost, and it also fulfills the original intent of the parcel on Cleveland Street, which was to support affordable housing. This project represents an important step for Redmond and the region to make a specific deep, to meet, excuse me, a specific deep need that's been identified through multi-county, countywide, and local planning processes. Permanent supportive housing is evidence-based. It helps people stabilize their lives as they're exiting homelessness, and in fact, it's really hard to imagine a way to solve homelessness without access to this rung of the housing ladder. So we look forward to working with the city and with the community to build understanding, address the concerns, and ensure that this project can be a success for Redmond, and that we can make this a positive example. And so thank you for the time to speak.
Next up is Deb Young, then Kate Butt, then Jay Lowe, then Bill King.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm Deb Young, and I'm an old-timer. I got a lot of passion. I grew up, born and raised in this town, as my friend did too. My daddy's picture's on the wall, selling Bud Young. He loved this town. He dealt with things very differently than you did. If somebody needed to talk to him, he'd open his door. He'd invite them in. He'd treat them like a person. With all due respect, looking at the situation, you all have lost your way. This is a book. It says, "Our Town of Redmond." It's historical. Maybe some of you have seen it, maybe you haven't. My dad stood out here with a back hole. This building dug the first hole, cut the first ribbon. And I guess, you know, in his memory, because he loved this town so much, and so do I, you've got to give the people a voice.
As I reminded all of you when we started, I need the, just a moment. Ms. Young, just a moment. I'm holding your time. Ms. Young, just a moment. The audience needs to remain quiet while people are speaking, and we need to let them finish what they're saying. I'm asking all of you to remain quiet between each speaker as well, so that we can get through what people want to say in a timely fashion. Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Anyway, I was saying, it feels like, living here my entire life, I have seen a lot of history, and it's very disheartening not to want to even drive into your own town. The soul of this town feels like it's died, and we need to get it back. That's all I have to say. I hope it happens.
Next, we have Kate Butt, then Jay Lowe, then Bill King, then Ethan Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council members. I'm Kate Butt. I am originally from Tacoma. I moved to Seattle in 1970, still at the height of the Vietnam War. The first week, I watched people walk over a person, either dead or drunk, on the streets of Second and University. Skid Row was an active, derelict area at Pike Place Market after dark. I moved to Redmond in 1979. After living in many Seattle neighborhoods, there were only two stoplights, and the community was relatively quiet. Come the 1990s, and the gangs found Redmond, and there were, we experienced drive-by shootings. Thankfully, the city stepped up the presence of the police, and they made a gang task force and improved the situation almost immediately. About 2000, I started encountering homeless, obviously substance abusers, walking the Redmond downtown streets. One particular couple was a man who walked in front of a very beautiful, blue-eyed woman. They were definitely high, and they were living rough. Eventually, I contacted the police, and they told me they had offered housing, treatment, and all the services that were available at that time. They refused. Fast forward five years, the couple was now only the woman. Her head bowed, and her two front teeth were missing. What I know is the measures tried in the past, avoiding, ignoring criminalizing behavior, is not working. Pressure on one community simply moves the unhoused into another neighborhood. Seattle developed a master plan to combat both homelessness and substance abuse, and it was never adopted there, but exported into a Scandinavian community that has now no unhoused. Our electeds and these educated in substance abuse and mental illness are attempting to improve and make progress in these thorny issues. The success, I believe Norway or the Netherlands, has been exported back to us. It is not an unproven solution. We have an opportunity to succeed. We have the funds, the laws, the reforms, and the expertise to tackle this humanitarian crisis. Please support our mayor and council in our efforts to help all of us. Thank you.
Next, we have Jay Lowe, Bill King, Ethan Robinson, and then Olga Zakharovin. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
Hello. I'm Jay Lowe. I have lived in this community for close to 30 years, and I would like to thank Vanessa Kritzer, Council President, for responding promptly to my feedback about language access for the city website. Ensuring the translation feature is placed at a visible location on the homepage helps limited English proficiency speakers access city services more efficiently. More generally, the availability of city info in multiple languages reduces the chances of misunderstanding and disinformation. Thank you, Vanessa Kritzer, for making the Redmond website more language accessible. As an immigrant who has benefited from the infrastructure built by Redmond residents who came before me, I appreciate the city's efforts at diversity, equity, and inclusion, which has the potential to uplift those of our neighbors who face unequal access, whether due to language proficiency, housing affordability, or social prejudice. Thank you, council, for the good work, and I look forward to doing more good work together with you as a community.
Next, we have Bill King, then Ethan Robinson, then Olga Zakharovin, then Sergey Geno Chen.
All right. Hi. My name is Bill King. I've been living in downtown Redmond for about eight years now, and I'd like to thank the council for taking fast action to secure $30 million in funding for affordable supportive housing in Redmond. Housing affordability isn't just a Seattle problem or a Bellevue problem, it's a regional problem, and I'm proud to see Redmond doing its part and acting with the appropriate urgency to address our housing crisis. I'd like to read some testimonials from residents of existing Plymouth Housing Developments. "I would still be homeless if it weren't for Plymouth Housing." "Plymouth saved my life, because I went from doorway to brand-new apartment building. Thanks, Plymouth." "Plymouth Housing saved my life and turned it all around. I'm so blessed and grateful for this program. Nine years of sobriety and six years of having my own apartment, I couldn't have done it alone." "Lived here for seven years, one month. Great location. The apartment came with all the essentials you could think of, even a little food. The staff has been warm, friendly, and very welcoming. I love living here. The staff is helpful, caring, and nice. Clean and beautiful, and a lot of fun community activities. I'm so grateful to Plymouth Housing Group. This housing group has given me a chance from surviving from health issues and surviving freezing weather, escaping violence, and for being able to have a safe place to live. I am grateful for Plymouth Housing for giving me a chance to have my life. I have a lot of medical problems, and for the first time, I feel like I have a home. Not an apartment, but a place I can call my home. It took me about six months to feel that way, but you have no idea how great it is to feel safe again. I had given up, and now I feel that I can move forward. I wouldn't trade this place for anything." All right. "We know from studies that these kinds of permanent supportive housing projects are among the most effective interventions for people exiting homelessness. This development in downtown Redmond will save lives in our community. Thank you all for taking this opportunity to house our neighbors and for showing the region that Redmond won't jerk its responsibility."
We are going to take a 15-minute recess for sunset, and we will return at, if I can do math tonight, 7:23. 7:33, thank you. It's been a long day. 7:33, we're in recess.[1000.13]
And we are back in session. Next up is Ethan Robinson, then Olga Zakharovin, and then Sergey Zenochin, then April, no, Arpit Gupta, then Aspen Richter.
Good evening, President Kritzner, council members. My name is Ethan Robinson. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, Seattle, King, and Kiddedass Counties to express our support for the Plymouth Housing Project in Redmond. For close to four decades, our affiliate has been dedicated to constructing affordable housing solutions in Redmond and across western Washington. We firmly believe that it's our collective responsibility to build a world where everyone has a safe, decent, and affordable place to call home. My wife and I called Redmond home for many, many years and truly cherish this city. We built community and countless memories in this city. I appreciate that this council understands the pressing challenges our community faces and has already approved the land transfer for this crucial project. Our organization believes that addressing the housing crisis requires significant investment throughout the housing continuum, including permanent supportive housing projects like this one. Our affiliate has 15 homeowners in Redmond alone and thousands of supporters across the region. We have been active in this community and the area for a very long time. We know that if we want to build more homeowners and create more opportunities for this community to thrive, then we must double down on our efforts to tackle this housing crisis. Whether through direct support for projects like this or by fully implementing middle housing HB 1110 into our comprehensive plans, we must act decisively. Habitat understands that realizing a world where everyone has a safe, decent, and affordable place to call home requires initiatives like this one. It's a necessary step towards a brighter Redmond. On behalf of Habitat SKC and myself, I want to thank this council and other supporters of the Plymouth Housing Project. Thank you.
Next, we have Olga Zakharovin, I think. You can correct, correct the last name for me. Sergey Zeno Chin, and then Arpit Gupta.
Good evening, everybody. I have been living in downtown Redmond for more than 25 years. And I can compare what I saw 25 years ago and what I see today. For example, when this building was just in projection, City Council held so many public meetings to discuss everything, to let us know what it will be, how trees will be saved, whatever. But last decade, bring just more and more frustration. Because more and more, we feel that City Council doesn't want to know our opinion, doesn't want to know our feedback. And even when it is situation about projects that are about our safety. First one was shelter for young adults, which was put almost next to the kids daycare. Then it was story with silver clouding. And now, you bring us one more project, which is not, which is not safe. I know that it's necessary, but it's also necessary to think about residents, their kids, and safety. I Googled project, and I found that this project will be just .04 miles from Redmond High School, which has more than 500 students. I sent you email. I haven't received anything back. It looks like you don't, you don't have answer to my questions. Did you take a second just to think and discuss safety of those kids? Did you take a second just to think about families which use Anderson Park? And Anderson Park is just 400 feet from the address of the coming Plymouth House. I don't have kids in this area, but I worry about them because I live in downtown Redmond. I saw what-
In conclusion?
What youth shelter brought here. I see what is going on now.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Sergey Zenochin, then April Gupta, then Aspen Richter. And once again, I ask the audience to please allow the time to go to the speakers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sergey Zenochin. So I want to start by saying, we are not, we are not confrontation here. We're on the same side. We should be on the same side. You are my representatives. I voted from you. I'm hoping that you're presenting me. So in Kenmore, apparently, I was told, it took 11 months of deliberations and public pushing back before this project was cut. I would think that after hearing about Kenmore, council members would think, most likely, Redmond also is going to push back and fight, and this is hit a topic. I don't understand how 19 month in Kenmore translated into one week in Redmond. What were you thinking? What, why are we so different from Kenmore that you did this to us? Also, previous, previous speaker said, thank you for being supporters of Plymouth. First and foremost, you are my representatives, represent me, and then be supporters of Plymouth. There were some, I heard some touching stories from people who did get into Plymouth Housing. They're great. I would like to hear as a homeowner, I would like to hear stories from homeowners who got Plymouth Housing built next to their, their homes. What did they have to say now? Because I can relate to them better. Please share those stories with me. So I believe important decision like this belongs to ballot. Thank you very much for your attention.
Next, we have Arpit Gupta, then Aspen Richter, then Janelle Webster, I think? No. Maybe, Janelle? And then Al Rosenthal? Your phone number starts with 408? No? Next, we have Aspen Richter, then Janelle Webster, then Al Rosenthal, then KK, James, oh, it's James, James Webster, sorry, sorry, James. And then Al Rosenthal, then Kiki Montgomery. April, Aspen?
My name is Aspen Richter, and I have lived in First 98053 and then in Redmond itself for the past 20 years in total. So I've seen the city change, and let me just say thank you. I like what you're doing. It's going in a good direction. I do support Plymouth Housing, and I understand that the council made a very quick proposal decision based on opportunity that came up before you in what is, by city government standards, pretty much lightning speed. And I see that your decision aligns with the long-stated goals of the city. I support that. Also, toward the previous commenter on children, I am really active in the PTSA in the area, and I was talking to some PTSA leadership from Redmond Elementary School. And if anyone would be going to oppose that, it would probably be them. They're very close to the location. But when I showed them the fact, they had an open mind. They read it, and they ultimately said they want everyone in our community to have housing. They want safety, but they also want everyone to have housing. So I would just urge those in the room who are basing their arguments on fear or stereotypes, just to remember that an individual is not just one fact about them, whether that's race, income, disability, past drug use, or even past criminal history. People are complicated, and people are people, and we are all people. Redmond needs to be able to house all people, and so I do support Plymouth Housing. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have James Webster, sorry, James, and Al Rosenthal, then Kiki Montgomery, then Brenda Larson.
That's okay. My, my handwriting is terrible. I do apologize. This one's typed. Hello, my name is James Webster, and I've been a resident of Redmond for nearly nine years, five blocks from where this project is aimed to take place. I proudly serve as the vice chair of Pride Across the Bridge, an organization dedicated to supporting our diverse LGBTQIA+ community on the east side. Pride Across the Bridge fully supports the city's decision to pursue Plymouth Housing Affordable Housing Development at 16725 Cleveland Street, including the transfer of land. In our organization's recent end-of-year survey, two pressing needs emerged prominently from our community: housing and transportation. With a disproportionately high percentage of our unhoused population belonging to the queer community, we regularly hear about and even personally encounter the challenges and hardships faced by our vulnerable population. Especially concerning is the lack of renter protection on the east side, coupled with the ever-increasing costs of living with a correspond, without a corresponding rise in income. Many in our community struggle to even contemplate having a savings account, let alone contribute to one. It is a sad reality and becoming a common daunting phrase that many individuals are just one unfortunate event or missed paycheck away from homelessness. This urgent need is recognized not only by our community, but also by our organizations, businesses, and schools. We urge the city to continue the commendable efforts already underway to realize the Plymouth Housing Project. We extend our gratitude to the city for not only swiftly approving the Plymouth Housing proposal, but also for the ongoing efforts to disseminate accurate information and counteract the spread of misinformation. Thank you for taking action that will undoubtedly have a lasting and positive impact on many lives in our communities. Stop clapping. She said, stop clapping. Can you follow instructions? Thank you so much for your time, and have a wonderful, patient rest of your day.
Next up, we have Al Rosenthal, then Kiki Montgomery, then Brenda Larson, then Lucia Richardson, then Ming Ming Zhao.
Thank you. I'm a commercial property owner here in Redmond since 1995. And I'm concerned about the drugs that are going to be in this project. You all saw, well, you should have seen the video I sent it to. You heard part of it. And you told me that Chief Lowe is going to stop drugs from being used, just like they are everywhere else in the city. How is he going to go into the apartments? What you should do is give the police department in the agreement access 24/7 to the building with drug-sniffing dogs if they wish. If it's suspected there are drugs in an apartment, the management should let them in without a court order. That should be in the agreement. Now, you might say, well, that's against their civil rights. They're getting a free apartment. They're drug addicts. We know in the other locations where they're at, they use drugs in their space. You should be doing that. That would make it a little bit safer for the public. And probably as though Plymouth Housing wouldn't want to have, wouldn't want to build if you did that, and the homeless people that don't want to get off drugs and want to do drugs wouldn't want to live there. Mayor Bernie, the first two-year-old that picks, picks up a pretty colored little fentanyl pill and eats it and dies, will you go to their funeral? Especially if that pill came from one of the people from the housing or one of the drug dealers that are attracted to Redmond to sell to the people in the housing? Will you go to that funeral? Do you know, do you know the old saying, just say no to drugs? Are you now just saying, just say yes to drugs? You think that will get people out of homelessness if you allow them to do drugs in their apartments? Do you know that they're considering pairing people up in apartments and hotel rooms? Because when they OD, there's nobody to know it, and they die. So that do, it's actually less safe when they're by themselves than when they're on the street in a tent and somebody sees them OD. Do you realize that's one of the things that's happening now? Pairing people up so when they OD, they can be revived? They're going to open next year. You know, the apartment building right down the, halfway down the block, just the other side of the street, the seventh, new seven-story one? That took 14 months to get approved. Four land meetings. They kept changing the plans on them. They, they made them put retail in the bottom. They made them do all kinds of things. How is this building going to be built in a year? You're not going to scrutinize it like you do a private property, where you up the cost of living because of it. You up the cost of apartments by forcing retail in places where it doesn't belong across the street here. Retail doesn't sell well. A dentist ended up going in there, but generally, it's hard to rent that kind of property. You're actually causing a higher cost by having long times before people can get permits, making them put retail in the bottom, making through-block throughways, which is a waste of space where apartments could be built. Your, your building permits actually caused the cost of housing to go up, and you talk about affordable housing. Thank you.
Next, we have Kiki Montgomery, then Brenda Larson, then Lucia Richardson, then Ming Ming Zhao, then Zelena, who was Zelena? Yelena? Yelena? I don't, I can't read your last name. Sorry, Yelena. KK?
Hi. Thank you for this time. I'm a res, I am a Redmond resident and a resident at the Together Center, and I support the bill, the apartment that's going to be classed for Plymouth. I am a 23-year-old youth who is just homeless. I've been homeless in this state since 2018. I have half history with using drugs. So for the person who is up here lastly speaking, saying that people are getting paired up in housing so that they won't OD, I'm a prime example that you can recover. We do recover. Everyone deserves a roof over their head. I am a mother to a two-year-old boy and a six-month-old girl, and I came through a lot. I've been homeless. I'm a survivor of human trafficking. Washington is my home away from home. I feel like we need more affordable housing. The more we sit here and we say, not in our backyard, I want to see you housed, but not over here because you're homeless, or this is your background. You know, it just, it makes it harder for me to understand. How are you, like, how are you a human? Like, you, you say people deserve housing, but you don't want them housed here. So where do we send them? We have people outside sleeping, and it's like, there's, it's a problem with them sleeping by a library. It's a problem with them sleeping on the trail. So where are they expected to go? I mean, we're pushing people. We're pushing the homeless. Like, you know, I mean, I feel like you saying you want the police to have 24, 24-hour access to the building. They don't have 24-hour access to the Together Center, and we're doing pretty great. In my apartment complex, we stand for like equity. We stand for like the care and concern of this community. Like, we're not out here just doing the most. And since our apartment have been up, I've been housed stably for almost a year. I just signed my lease again. I'm not using drugs. I'm clean and sober. And I thank you guys for pushing this bill because without my apartment complex, my affordable low-income housing, I would still be homeless. I would still be using drugs. I would not have custody of my children. I would still be hopeless, trying to kill myself. I have mental health issues. I live with those. But we all deserve a chance to heal. Everyone deserves housing, no matter if you're a drug addict, no matter if you're dirty, no matter the situation. Like, everybody deserves housing, and you guys won't understand it until it's someone in your family or someone who is close to you that is being trafficked with a gun to their head, being told if they don't do this or that, they're going to get killed. Thank you.
Next, we have Brenda Larson, then Lucia Richardson, then Ming Ming Zhao, then Yelena. Is there? Okay. You'll tell me when you get up here. Thank you. Brenda? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brenda Larson. Thank you for letting us speak today, Mayor Bernie, city council members. My husband and I have raised our family here and lived in Redmond since 82 and 92, respectively. I am here to support the- I am here to support the city's intent to pursue the Plymouth Housing affordable housing development at 16725 Cleveland Street, including the transfer of land. The affordable housing is located favorably for residents of the housing to access transit, shopping, and medical care. Redmond is in need of affordable housing, especially for those with disabilities. My 30-plus-year-old son is legally blind and disabled and is diagnosed with bipolar, and without having affordable housing, he would have few choices and could be homeless. When a person with children is working full-time for minimum wage and trying to pay for housing, childcare, transportation without affordable housing, they're likely to end up homeless. I was a young, single, divorced mother at one time, and I could not afford to leave an abusive relationship because of housing costs. Homeless numbers do not count a significant number of people who sleep on friends' couches or their parents' or spare rooms, and that makes affordable housing even in shorter supply. Please realize that although many in Redmond are fortunate to have good-paying jobs, nice homes, there are hard-working and good people who cannot thrive and have a chance to stabilize their lives without a place to live. Thank you.
Next, we have Lucia Richardson, then Ming Ming Zhao, then Yelena, who's going to share with me her last name, then Natalia Schweitz.
I just heard about this a couple days ago, and I don't have anything prepared, but I just have some thoughts and feelings I'll quickly share. Homelessness is a problem, and I don't think this kind of housing is a solution to a homeless problem. A lot of people that are homeless do have drug issues, and a kind, loving thing to do is to help them with their drug issue, not give them housing. What they need is help. People with drugs need to be in some kind of rehab so they can get off the drugs and get jobs so that they can take care of themselves. There are people with mental illness. They need medical help. There are people that are unemployed because they've lost their jobs. They need employment help or maybe training. A lot of money could be spent on solving problems instead of just a Band-Aid. Just having this kind of housing isn't solving any problems. It's just prolonging it, and it's not a loving way to solve a problem.
Next, we have Ming Ming Zhao, Yelena, and then Natalia. And I'm pleased, once again, I'll ask the audience if you could please refrain from clapping and let people speak. Ming Ming Zhao? Ming Ming Zhao? If you could share with me your last name. Thank you.
I'm Yelena Isakova.
Isakova, thank you.
Nice meeting you. Good evening, everybody. I've been a resident of Redmond for 20-plus years, and honestly, I feel outraged, I feel cheated by every one of you. You're a city council who is supposed to work for us and with us to protect our safety and our interests. Instead, obviously and clearly, you work against us. It's mind-blowing how such a decision, critical for public safety and well-being of every resident of Redmond, has been done in a very sneaky way behind the doors in the course of 20, 21 days. It just, in my understanding, it's truly unacceptable. And we are all, I'm a single mom of two kids. I'm hardworking, and I pay my taxes. I'm a Biden citizen, and now I have to worry about my kids stepping on a needle and getting AIDS while playing on the playground in Anderson Park? I want to, I need to worry, and every parent here needs to worry about kids getting molested while getting off and on the school bus? Because remember, K-12, all school buses, they get, they pick up kids right a block away from there. If you think that I am exaggerating, please, go to Seattle, go to your district next to tiny homes. I work there. And as a woman, every time I go to work, I feel stressed, I feel scared. And unfortunately, Redmond, that you were all talking about just one hour ago in your original beginning of the discussion, you were talking about how wonderful Redmond is to grow kids, how safe it is, and how you care about the youth. And I do believe that you care about youth. But if you do care about youth, I just don't understand how this decision could be made so hastily. I'm not saying it's totally wrong decision, but these kind of decisions have to be done with the involvement of the public, with a clear plan, with the involvement of police, safety, how to mitigate the risks of this decision being made? Because they will affect every single one of us, and how it will affect the economy of Redmond? Because all the stores will close, all people in these nice shiny buildings that was built for lease will move away from Redmond, and basically, Redmond will become a ghost town. And trust me, I live here, I love living here, my kids growing up here, but I'm just concerned, and I think that this decision needs to be reconsidered and, yeah, put it on the ballot so that everybody can put their voice in. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Natalia Schweitz, then Dennis Ellis, then Marissa Flores, then Annie Coughlin. Ann? Okay. Thanks. Yes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Natalia Schweitz, and I'm a resident of Redmond for 10 years. And I actually moved to this country 15 years ago, and I see how our area changed from normal, safety place to live for place where, like, think, if you should let your kids to go, for example, for a walk for downtown, or she can find some needle on the trail, or she can meet some homeless people who can be, like, scared of them, you know? And I, like, I really stress about this situation, because when you're talking about democracy, I agree that every person is equal, every person has a right to live, but why should we bring, like, 100 people outside of our area to give them, like, new place in center, in center, Redmond? And who will provide the job for them to buy, like, to shop in the, like, expensive supermarkets, for example? Are you going to treat them from all these drugs and mental issues? No. Because I, like, I read, like, I read a lot about Democrats. Yeah, they're so nice, but when it's, like, come to the, like, drugs and issue with mental disease, they do not treat them. They just put these people in place with, like, a very small kind of, okay, they will add some people who will care about them, but they just, you know, they will not, they be, okay, whatever. Let's stop. And I would like also to hear statistics, story from homeowners who live next to this kind of Plymouth houses. I would like to say, like, maybe people from Seattle who live close to these houses. Did safety change? Did home prices change? Did businesses' landscape changes? Like, the businesses still open over there? Because, like, normal people, they not come to the places, like, look at Seattle downtown. It's a terrible place. And I think what you're doing, it's not, it's not a decision, you know? Like, you as, like, smart people, you need to find some normal decision for people, how to handle it, how to find job for them, how to not just make this decision for our kids. And I know, like, thank you for listening. Sorry.
Next, we have Dennis Ellis, then Marissa Flores, then Ann Coughlin? Coughlin? Thank you. And then Chris Apprecio.
Good evening. And first, I want to just thank you guys for your heartfelt "do not reply" response that I got from my emails expressing concerns on that. It really touches me in a big, big way. So I'm still very troubled by this project. This has been rushed through. Plymouth Supported Housing, the things that I've seen that have been reported on trustworthy news sites, thank you, Jonathan, show the blight that it causes, and I'm just really sad to see that Redmond is deciding to move this forward. Again, you've heard it here before. You guys are elected to represent me, the rest of the people in this room, and that's not being done. We're being slammed by special interest groups here. This seems like an insider shady deal that went pushed through, so I'm really disturbed about that, too. The public has been, should have been given notice and allowed to weigh in on public land, when paid for our tax, by our tax dollars, is being transferred to a private entity. Maybe then the council and mayor would understand that the majority of the residents of this city are opposed to these disgusting deals that went through and know you are attempting to turn Redmond into Seattle without a vote or input from the people most impacted. This follows the secretive deal you, the mayor, negotiated with King County to turn the former Silver Cloud Hotel into your own drug and crime incubation center near 10 schools or daycares without even notifying the city council, if I remember correctly. This was a cowardly act on your part, and I can't help but think that you are personally profiting from both of these housing developments financially, or you're further elevating your woke status into your next step in destroying King County, running for King County executive. All political and personal interests should be transparent to the public. In my view, this is just another step in the city council creating a problem instead of actually solving a problem. Turn Redmond into, you're turning Redmond into an unrecognizable city due to your poor planning? Check. Grind traffic to a halt, ESG-style traffic planning? Check. Build the choo-choo train to import all the Seattle blight? Check. Build or buy or build or give away real estate to your favorite NGOs to warehouse the blight? Check. Oh, I forgot. And fire first responders over an illegal mRNA injection mandate. Finally, this isn't about affordable housing. It never was. This is about profiting off the plight of others, and that really makes me sad.
Next, we have... I have asked you all to be quiet, and I'm going to continue to ask you to do that. I would like to give the time to our speakers. If you could, please be quiet during the speakers, because as I call people up, the next person should be ready to go. Next, we have Marissa Flores, and then Ann, I'm sorry, Ann, you're going to have to tell me your last name again when you come up. Coughlin? Coughlin. Perfect. Coughlin. And then Chris Apprecio, then Raymond Zhang? Zhang? Right. Thank you. Oops.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Marissa Flores. I've lived in Redmond a little over 10 years. Just found out about this meeting today, so I'm glad I could come and speak about Plymouth Housing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, for letting me speak today, and thank you for the quick action you took to secure the funding needed to get more affordable housing into Redmond on the East Side overall. We've all seen the need just continues to grow, and a thoughtful project like this that looks to care for and house some of the most vulnerable among us, who are very low-income and are just trying to make it work. We've all seen prices go up. These are for seniors, these are for people with disabilities. Makes me proud to live in a city that is stepping up and stepping in to care for the community. The city is going to continue to grow and change. It will continue to change, and these sort of projects need to build the infrastructure to support that change. It's never just going to stay as it is. So let's, thank you for the work you're doing, for building the community, and hopefully we can continue to support those that need it among us.
Ann Coughlin. Did I get it right?
Hello, you got it right.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dr. Ann Coughlin. I'm a clinical psychologist, so I am well-qualified to speak on this issue. I have both personal and professional experience with seriously mentally ill and drug-addicted people. I'm very glad for the young lady who was changed and saved in that facility. Congratulations to you, young lady, really. Most people do not. I am the guardian of a sister who was brain-injured as a result of a car accident. She was in a coma for two months and then developed organic bipolar. She was housed both with my parents for a long time, and then as she approached her late twenties, I saw how she wanted to be independent, hoped she would, hoped that she'd go to therapy, hope, hope, hope. Try, try, try. Every member of my family, my mother, my father, my brother, my sister, she was very well-housed. She had a condo to herself. She took care of it for a while, but this is the nature of mental illness, up and down. She refused any kind of therapy, and this went on for years. I had to take legal measures to get control of her. This is heartbreaking. I had to go to court and stand up against my own sister for her own good. She had been hospitalized probably every other year. A nightmare for her, a nightmare for us. Since she has been living in an assisted-living facility which requires medication, she has not been hospitalized for 12 years. At times, she has refused to take the medication. If it goes on a few days, they call me, I talk to her, remember the past, remember this, remember that. She would go to a place, something like Plymouth Housing, where she would be with drug addicts and ex-cons, and I'd tell her how bad it would be, and now she has freedom? This is, all she has to do is take the medicine. She refuses therapy. As a psychologist, I have dealt with addictions of all type. Fentanyl is the most difficult. Nobody stops it. Boom. Alone. The only proven cure is abstention from drugs. Even the people now who are there will be surrounded by drugs. It is impossible for them to do it. No one will receive the care they require. Care is offered, but it is not required. It needs to be required to work. These are vulnerable people. They need to be protected from themselves, and we need to be protected from some of them. Unfortunately, that's the truth. The quality of life that everybody bonds here will not remain the same. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, we have Chris Apprecio, then Raymond Zhang, then Nick Strathie, then Cynthia Lum.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Three concerns that I'd just like to bring up. One is going to be our children. If you guys notice, it's right across the street from Park and only a block and a half away from an elementary school. I'm certain you guys know that. Another concern is actually for the people that benefit from this, the homeless. And if, I'm not in your shoes, but if I were and wanted to get a job and eventually call Redmond my house, we're kind of putting them in an impossible situation. The real estate here is expensive. This isn't a housing problem. This is the value of the house problem. If we would like to actually fix that, we should focus on making a lot of affordable housing in general. So I feel for you guys, too. Like, if you wanted to, like, the testimony before me, if you wanted to actually be independent, like, it would almost be an impossible leap to go from being helped, calling Redmond my house, my home, I mean, and then going off and affording the rent here. Maybe there's a program that I don't know about that can help you out, if that's the direction you'd like to go. So I feel for you, too. My final concern is being a taxpayer. I have multiple businesses here. I also live here, and the information on helping the homeless crisis, I don't want it to become like California. There's a great documentary on YouTube, Colin Noir, is an attorney, talks about, in California, 2019 is the last data we had, it was $53 billion spent on the homeless problem, and if you divide that by the suspended homeless, that's $200,000 spent per homeless person. However, the benefits received was only $38,000. So it's a big discrepancy. So $200,000 paid, benefits, $38,000 per homeless person. So you guys have a really tough decision to make. I'm glad it's not my decision to make. I just want to make sure that you think about that as well, the efficiency of the money actually getting to help the people that need it. And also, being a taxpayer, I do want help for them. I do think this is the wrong location. If there was another location where rent was super cheap, like, if I wanted to go out to get a job, then I could get a job, and then also... to get a job, then I could get a job and then also afford the rent locally. Because if I decide to make this place my home, it's almost putting them in an impossible situation and that's a forever dependence. Now I'd like to just end this by saying, where you make problems profitable, you create incentives to make more of the same problem. Thank you.
Next we have Raymond Zhang, then Nick Strathie, then Cynthia Lum, then Karen Gonzalez, and then Pavel Stepanov. Stepanov, excuse me.
Hi, my name is Raymond Zhang. I have been a Redmond resident for two years. So this is a beautiful city. I love it. First, I want to thank you for being inclusive, just in this meeting. You included Women's History Month. Also, you include Ramadan sunset. But unfortunately, I think regarding this project, you seem to forget to include the Redmond residents in the whole process. For me, personally, I didn't learn about this project until probably a week ago. I guess many of us have the similar experience. First, I want to express my concern of your decision-making process. It's lack of transparency or public awareness. I'm from China, as you can tell, so a country with no democracy but full of corruption. So what you did really reminded me of my experience, life experience in China, unfortunately. Second, I want to express my concern of this project. I am a father of two, five and eight, a boy and a girl. If we were not because of this project, this meeting, I would have gone to Anderson Park with my two kids tonight. So I don't wanna make my kids to live in fear. Actually, no one's kid should live in fear. Third, I want to say, I think many of you know that you are solving a problem, if there's a problem, with a wrong solution. So actually, many, many cities, you know, like you name it, like for example, Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco, they have adopted the same recipe. So what I've seen is like, instead of solving homeless problem, they have a worse homeless problem, they have a worse drug problem. Okay. So with all that being said, I want, I demand the city to rescind this decision. Thank you.
Next we have. Next we have Nick Strathie, Cynthia Lum, Karen Gonzalez, Pavel Stepanov, and Linda Yang.
Hi, my name's Nick Strathie. I'm here to join my voice with the others demanding transparency in the rules and decisions in the proposed downtown homeless building. When they were growing up, I often took my children to play at Anderson Park, which is across from the proposed building site. I'm absolutely opposed to establishing a home for drug addicts, mentally ill, or sex offenders in that location. Such people are a danger to themselves, local businesses, and their neighbors, especially to children. There's evidently a widespread agenda afoot to destroy civilization and this is just the latest episode to hit Redmond. I'm in favor of my tax dollars going towards supporting struggling families and individuals from the Redmond area, not dangerous mentally ill, drug addicts, and God knows what criminal records, especially not if they're imported from far away. I demand transparency to assure that no such residence will be permitted in this proposed building. Thank you.
Next we have Cynthia Lum, then Karen Gonzalez, then Pavel Stepanov, then Linda Yang, then Stanislav Swayak. Swirk? Cynthia?
Okay.
Thank you.
Members of the council and Mayor Bernie, thank you for letting us have this time. I learned that a special session was held that resulted in approval of public land transfer in downtown Redmond and for free to Plymouth Housing and thereby intentionally depriving the public of the knowledge and opportunity to comment, to ask questions and get answers at that time. This low-barrier housing project, which includes accommodating sex offenders and freely allows use of addictive drugs such as fentanyl and cocaine and others, is a terrible plan and has always been already been proven to be a failure in Seattle. Allowing the Plymouth Housing Project will bring in crimes such as drug trafficking, sex trafficking, rape, theft, violence, and many other related crimes. Drug addicts have died from overdose in these facilities because drugs are allowed. Sometimes these people are not discovered for days. And I'm also hearing that this is the first of many of this type of facility that is being planned for all over Redmond, including the east side and wherever else Seattle can find. People with drug addiction and mental health issues need good compassionate professional treatment from medical staff in a medical setting. And we've come a long way in medical settings now. There are so many facilities that are caring and compassionate and have excellent medical care. I support affordable housing for people such as fixed income seniors, our veterans, low-income families, victims of violence like this young lady was, who want to improve their life, who want to take the next step to having a productive life like all of us want. The facility needs to be safe and free from crime and drugs such as methamphetamines, fentanyl, cocaine, and other social drugs. I am angry that our government leaders want to introduce this threat and danger into our community. This is what Plymouth Housing is. This is why the citizens of Kenmore adamantly refused it in their town because they care for their citizens and their children and their senior citizens and everyone who is vulnerable to these types of activities. It is not okay that Seattle is using Redmond and the rest of the greater Seattle to push off the bad results of their bad planning for drug addicts and the mentally ill. It's their irresponsible way of cleaning up their own city. You can just watch journalist Jonathan Cho, his YouTube videos that cover all of what's happening in these Plymouth Housing projects and whatever other NGOs there are out there participating in this. It's horrific and it's inhumane to these people who need real help with their addictions and their mental health. The Redmond City Council needs to rescind this last, this land transfer. Going forward, Redmond residents demand transparency from the city of Redmond.
In conclusion?
Officials at all times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Karen Gonzalez and then Pavel Stepanov, Linda Yang, Stanislav, and Susan Nor.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to talk, council people and other people here. I just wanna encourage you to think more clearly about this decision because usually businesses are affinities. You have a gas station next to a gas station, but if you have a homeless development, another one will show up somewhere else. And already, I deliver food from donated items to two locations here in Redmond. You have the Patricia Harris, you have the Friendly Village, you have the Cloud Motel. And I believe there's Section 8 housing throughout, you know, these apartment buildings that are going up. And then you have some low-income housing on Avondale, too. But it's, it's not like I don't care about people who are seriously drug addicted. My son-in-law opened a coffee shop in downtown Seattle, down the street from Plymouth. People die on his alleys. People do drugs in his parking lot. And he had a problem with somebody from Plymouth and he didn't know they were from Plymouth. He called the police and then the manager of Plymouth came down and said, why are you calling on my people? And he said, well, we'll tell them to behave. You have no control over people who live in some of these housing. But I don't know. I lived in an inner city in Long Beach, California. We lived next to the Union Gospel Mission and not really next to it, about four blocks away. There was always people sleeping outside of the mission. They only take the people that are able to handle their rules. There's people sleeping on the streets because they don't follow the rules and they just stay there. They don't go. This was like 20 years ago. So I just think it's a, it's a problem and there should be better solutions and just, I'm a taxpayer, my kids grew up here, and I think it's kind of disrespectful to do what you're doing. That's it.
Next we have Pavel Stepanov, then Linda Yang, then Stanislav Swayak, and then Susan Nor.
My name is Pavel Stepanov. Mayor, council people, hello. I was here at the February 13th session that you guys had when you decided to give away our land to somebody because you decided to yield the political power to serve special interest groups. You all know who you are and only one of you had decency to vote no on this. Okay? When you had this meeting, you didn't allow anybody of us to speak, to address you, to express our concerns. Also, I noticed you didn't mention how you're going to help those men and women in uniform to actually be better, or at least you didn't tell them that their work is going to triple or quadruple because of your action. Because Mayor Bernie, you gotta be gone after this term. You know this. Wherever you go, you go, but you probably don't care what's gonna happen. We do care, we live here. Same goes for the council people. Some of you are new on the board. Learn to hear from your constituents. It's one thing. Number two, what I also noticed, when the Plymouth people were here, nobody, not a single one of you asked them how they are going to make sure that safety is first priority for the residents of Redmond. Also, if they say they're gonna be so great at operating this facility, neither one of you asked them what stops them to actually improve their current sites at the moment. Because what's happening there right now, it's a disaster. People doing drugs, people shooting up, people dying, odying. Why can't they fix what they have right now, but they giving you the promise that they're gonna be operating satisfactorily the current facility in Redmond? So having said that, Mayor Bernie, what's your kickback? What kind of a kickback are you getting from this special interest groups? Maybe you wanna disclose it. Maybe sometime, I hope someday, you'll be deposed and you'll have to disclose this information. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next we have Linda Yang and Stanislav, you'll have to tell me your last name, Swayak, Swirk, and Susan Nor, and then Jacqueline Kimzie.
Hello, I'm Stanislav Schwerz.
Oh, this is supposed to be Linda Yang. Sorry. You're next, sorry.
Dear Mayor and Council President Kreizer and council members, first I want to read Washington Constitution. It said, "All political powers is inherent in the people and governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed and are established to protect and maintain individual rights." I would like to take the opportunity to commend on the Plymouth permanent support housing in downtown Redmond. I understand that you have relinquished all your authority over the project to Mayor and the city staff. This is why I'm asking you to please rescind your decision on February 13th and go through the proper steps to put up a affordable housing project in downtown Redmond. I do not oppose building affordable housing in downtown Redmond. I do have a big problem with a complete lack of transparency and democracy in how you shuffle this project into our community without giving any notice and allowing any input. City of Kenmore spent almost two years, went through RFP, and had three public hearings, then determined that the Plymouth House project did not meet its goal to provide affordable housing for seniors and veterans in their community. In comparison, it only took seven days from having the first closed-door exact session to approve the project and authorize the land transfer. You can't fool anyone and say you did your due diligence. You can't. The council could vote the decision in a regular session, which by the state law requires the council to hear public comments before making final decision. Instead, Council President Kreizer insists to have the vote in a special session and deprive the people the opportunity to give public comments. Kreizer also misled the public multiple times at the special meeting on February 13th. She should resign from the council president position. Director Helen knowingly misled the public on the disability requirement. There's no funding requirement for disability. She refused to publicly correct the false information she put out. For this and many others things she has done, Director Helen needs to be investigated. I have repeated requests the city to clearly state on the city's FAQ page that disability is not eligibility requirement for Plymouth permanent support housing. I'm making such a request today so that it's on the record and the city has provided incorrect information to the public. The city owes it to the, to its people to publicly correct it. Thank you.
Next we have Stanislav. Can you share your last name with me, please? How do you say your last name?
Schwerz.
I'm not gonna get that, I'm sorry. And then Susan Nor, then Jacqueline Kimzie, then Linda Seltzer.
Right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So me and my wife, we moved to Redmond nine years ago and today we live with our baby boy, just four blocks away from Anderson Park where we take him to play. I came here as a vice president of 66 Degrees HOA Community, which is a community of 18 townhouses, some of which also house small kids. Let me state that I'm not saying that the supportive housing idea is bad. I'm saying that the current, the project in its current form is bad because it does not adequately address the problem of substance abuse. And then people here talk passionately about it. My concern can be summarized differently. Like would Plymouth Housing evict a tenant for repeatable substance abuse violation? And as someone with a PhD and strong background in statistics, I search for data because I thought that I will answer that with data. Unfortunately, I couldn't find a reliable source, so Plymouth Housing does not publish the data. I only found anecdotal data that suggests that the answer would be no. So they would allow based on anecdotal evidence. But still, it makes me believe that if this project came into fruition in its current form, the Anderson Park playground and the surrounding area would no longer be safe for my son. So it would be loss for my family, but just temporary, right? Because soon my son will lose interest in playgrounds, but it'll be a permanent loss to all residents of our still beautiful city. Yeah, thank you.
Next we have Susan Nor, then Jacqueline Kimzie, then Linda Seltzer, then Lisa Tracy.
I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk. It's kind of nice to actually, you allow us to speak and hear what we have to say. This is something that should have happened all along. A lot of this, I think, comes down to trust. It's not necessarily whether you're against housing, whether you are against homeless projects, whether you think it's gonna be filled with drug addicts or individuals that are gonna hurt your children. To me, it's more about you represent us. Each of you have, has a responsibility to see what your constituents want and represent them. Yes, you were elected because we felt as though you could make good decisions and you could lead us and help us change and empower, empower our community to move to greater heights. Yes, we need housing. Yes, we need affordable housing. Kenmore spent two years working with their constituents. Plymouth Housing could not come with an agreement that would please the citizens of Kenmore. That's why it went down. Only reason, they had funding. But what happened was, instead of doing the senior citizens, instead of helping the disabled, it came down to only helping individuals that were on drugs. You go to the 990 tax returns of Plymouth Housing, they allow their individuals that they're servicing to self-identify their needs. If they want to come clean, they can come clean, they'll help them. If they don't, they don't make them. I personally don't feel like that is a program and I'm sure that's probably why the people in Kenmore didn't go ahead and approve it. When Plymouth changed the program, that's when they lost the funding or they lost the backing of the community to do that. Instead, what did we do? We automatically picked it up. You guys just assumed that we didn't have the same desires, we weren't, we didn't want the same thing that the people of Kenmore did. And that's not okay. You should have let us talk, you should have asked. You didn't trust us. You didn't say, we are a wonderful community, there are a lot of wonderful people here. We could have come together and said, hey, let's come up with a plan. How can we help these people? How can we as a community work together and help these people? But you didn't trust us. Instead, it was a fly-by-night, let's just pass this, we know better. Not okay, not okay at all. Not okay, not okay at all. Plymouth had an opportunity to work with Kenmore, and they had an opportunity to work it out and figure it out. Plymouth owns this, they didn't do it. I do not feel that we should work with Plymouth on a fly-by-night situation. Bad planning on their part is not an emergency on our part. I do not feel like we should have to push this through. I also would like to say that I feel like it's really important that you change your views, because if not, we're gonna feel like we really need to change our council for the next election.
Next, we have Jaclyn Kimzie, then Linda Seltzer, then Lisa Tracy, then Vivian Huang?
Hello, my name is Jackie, and I'm here in support of Plymouth Housing Affordable Housing Development at the 16725 Cleveland Street, that's just one mile from where I live now. When I learned about Redmond's plans to build housing for those who need it most, I felt I had found a community with humanity. Shelter is a basic need for all humans, and it breaks my heart to see people who need it most denied housing because of fear or hate. Like much of America, Washington has severe housing crisis. The number of unhoused people continue to increase. Studies show that the most effective and least expensive solution is to provide housing to the unhoused. The National Library of Medicine says homelessness is a public health and environmental problem. Quote, "Housing is one of the most critical factors in addressing homelessness and one of the best researched social determinants of health." It's really just common sense to house the unhoused. However, misinformed NIMBYs have often gotten in the way of badly needed housing projects like this one. Some will even dehumanize unhoused people and engage in victim blaming when it's clear the issue is insufficient housing infrastructure. If the folks in this room, the ones who are unable to follow the simple rule to not clap during comments, had done any research, they would know, quote, "Registered sex offenders and individuals with certain past drug-related convictions will not be eligible for this housing. We can't afford to turn a blind eye to those in the need of housing here in Redmond. That's why the Plymouth Housing Project is so important. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Next, we have Linda Seltzer, then Lisa Tracy, then Vivian Huang? And I think, just a moment, Linda. I would really ask the audience to please remain silent, people are speaking, it is quite disrespectful. Thank you, Ms.
Yeah, I'll just, on the housing, I'll just say briefly that I previously commented that the success of the housing depends on how it's designed in detail, and putting, forcing people to share a room with people they've never met before, strangers, is a recipe for disaster, but if you give people their own private apartment with their own bathroom, and even their own washer and dryer, and if you have the right medical provider like Harborview involved, it could be successful. But I was gonna talk about something else tonight. King County is proposing to build a solid waste transfer station on Redmond-Woodenville Road. Although this is outside the city limits, I ask you to actively oppose this proposal. Redmond-Woodenville Road is a rural road that is too narrow to handle additional traffic with large trucks making turns. This is already an accident-prone and crowded road on rush hour. Transfer station should be sited in the Spring District near the light rail and the bus terminal construction and the highways, which is already urbanized. The transfer station would also adversely affect the rural character of the neighborhood and its admirable use for agriculture. The government is generally demonstrating a lack of appreciation for the rare and precious fertile land that we have here, and to the need to support farming for the local and national food supply, and I hope that it doesn't come to some emergency situation of famine when we find that out, about that reality. Right now, we're supporting tech companies' transient temporary work HR policy as our first priority rather than food and agriculture, and this makes no sense from a national policy point of view, so please oppose this transfer station.
Next, we have Lisa Tracy and Vivian Huang, then Karen Rodriguez, then Pat Swanson.
Hi, my name's Lisa Tracy, and I think I've lived in Redmond longer than some of you have been alive. We've been here since 1980. I've raised six kids in Redmond, I've been on every PTA board, president at every school they were in, and always had an opinion and believed that everyone was entitled to an opinion. But I always felt like, as an elected PTA president, vice president, it was my responsibility to listen to the people who voted for me, and I expect no less of you. But unfortunately, you took this opportunity not to listen to me or anybody else but yourselves. You didn't listen to the people who put you in those chairs, and that's shameful. I saw an email from somebody that said, "The state of Washington requires these public hearings," I'm paraphrasing because I didn't write a quote because I can't write so well. "The state of Washington requires input and these public hearings, and that's just what ruins it for us." I've become aware that a Redmond city employee also happens to be the president or on the board of Arch. I think that's a conflict of interest because it would appear that that information from Kenmore through Arch immediately came the next day to the city council. And I think, when I was a PTA president, I could be a PTA president, or I could be Lisa Tracy. But if I stood up as Lisa Tracy, I had to be in a venue where everybody knew I wasn't the PTA president, and I had to declare that. And I didn't hear any such declaration when I was here several weeks ago. It was said, and you all can correct me, but I think I went back and found it on the video, it was said that 100% of the residents in this facility would be from Redmond. I don't know how you can do that when a homeless person doesn't have a home. I do remember when Redmond used to have homeless people, and we would call the city, and they would go and help them, and there was a person who had the job to go and find them and help them, house them, feed them, and find them a job. And that's what we used to do, for the people who really lived here. 100% of the people were going to be disabled, and that could be qualified by drugs, or by mental health, or by physical disabilities. No mention was made of senior citizens, or veterans, or of families, unless they, of course, came with any of the previous categories. So, the Together Center, which was mentioned in a clip on one of the papers I read, was a wonderful opportunity to work with Arch, and it took years. And, they already owned the land. We didn't give them the land, they owned the land, they went through the building process, they went through all the permitting, they had to have public hearings just like everybody else. But you all have chosen to take the backdoor opportunity, and in my opinion, it would appear you did it because you didn't wanna have public input before you gave up that land. And my money is very important to me, and you all have spent about $8 million of it, and you should reconsider where you're spending the money. And as far as this survey...
Next, we have Vivian Huang, then Karen Rodriguez, then Pat Swanson, and then David Morton. In case you are wondering, we have about 20, 30 more people to speak. Next, we have Vivian Huang. Your phone number starts with 401? No? We have Karen Rodriguez, then we have Pat Swanson, then David Morton, then Bob Yoder.
My name is Karen Rodriguez-Lapaz, I am HopeLink's Vice President of EDI and Community Affairs, overseeing public policy, advocacy, and outreach. HopeLink is a community action agency and the largest service provider in North and East King County. Through our five service centers, we support 50,000-plus individuals annually through programs and resources that are the foundation to exit poverty. We also provide 113 units of emergency transitional and permanent housing, including 59 units, 51 transitional, and eight shelters in the city of Redmond. I'm testifying today in support of Redmond's intent to pursue the Plymouth Housing Affordable Housing Development, including the transfer of the land, which will create 100 units of permanent supportive housing for those exiting homelessness, people with disabilities, and those who make less than 30% of the area median income. We know that there is a growing need for affordable housing at every income level on the east side, including in Redmond. This relationship between stable and affordable housing and individual household stability and well-being cannot be overstated. Stable housing has a direct and profound impact on the well-being, the health, and the long-term economic security of our community. Individuals and families experiencing homelessness have a unique set of challenges, particularly as they're dealing with other individual factors like domestic violence, medical conditions, aging, and disabilities. Permanent supportive housing is one of the most effective interventions to stabilize the lives of those exiting homelessness. We support this project, and we thank you for your contributions. Thank you.
Next, we have Pat Swanson, then David Morton, then Bob Yoder, then Leah Ellis.
Good evening, Redmond City Council and fellow neighbors. I'm Pat Swanson, I'm one of the co-lead pastors at Overlake Christian Church on Willow's Road over here, where I've been on staff for over 14 years. We enthusiastically support the city's intent to pursue the Plymouth Housing Development, which is in alignment with previous stated city goals. My wife and I have two young kids of our own, and like others in this room, I long to live, work, and play in a community that is safe, beautiful, and creates opportunities for everyone to flourish. The building of all types and all income levels of affordable housing is a must for our whole region. Overlake, we highly value our partnership with the city of Redmond and others to help people who are struggling so everyone in our community can flourish and experience belonging. Together, over the past seven years, we've assisted over 150 people move from our Safe Parking Program, where folks are sleeping in their vehicles, into affordable housing. As a church, we have had to wisely navigate how to meet a diversity of needs, from affordable childcare to being a resource and hygiene center for those, with those needs. We recognize compassion is not absent of common sense, and having the right partnerships in place is huge. Plymouth is a great partner. We have seen firsthand the power and importance of the permanent supportive housing model, which has proven to be one of the most effective ways to stabilize lives of those exiting homelessness. Our region doesn't need less of this type housing, it needs more of it. On Sundays, I get to worship alongside everyone, from people who own multiple properties to those sleeping in their vehicle. One friend at church was recently able to transition from chronic homelessness into a safe, stable home in Plymouth Housing over here in Bellevue. Last summer, I got to go and celebrate with another friend, him just moving into housing at Plymouth over here in Bellevue, we went to a Mariners game together, and even his caseworker came along with us. These aren't dangerous drug addicts, these are my friends, and they have stories. Faith Communities in Redmond and the surrounding area have long been important partners by helping people in need by providing shelter, food, health services, supportive friendships, spiritual care, and other essentials, and we just wanna continue to partner with you in our faith tradition, command to love our neighbors. We're grateful for what you're doing, keep it up, it's hard work. Thank you.
Next, we have David Morton, then Bob Yoder, then Leah Ellis.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. Along Avondale Road from the bridge over Bear Creek, up to 182nd Avenue Northeast, pedestrians, bicyclists, and other users of multimodal transportation are vulnerable to rather unsafe, harsh, and noisy conditions. Here are examples. First, due to new construction at Northeast 90th Street and Avondale, at least 11 street trees have been cut down. Some were removed because a planter strip is required to separate the sidewalk from the street. In 2023, users of the bike lane and sidewalk at this location faced unsafe conditions. It's now somewhat safer, but still unsafe. Also, the heat island effect caused by removing the shade trees was very noticeable last summer. Second, along the northbound lane of Avondale Road across from Brown Bear Car Wash, a section of curb and street gutter has sunk over time. When it rains, standing water covers much of the bike lane. This area was repaved in 2023, and a new storm drain was installed, which seemed to make the pond slightly larger. It was decided that drilling holes in the old curb might fix it, but standing water still forces bicycles uncomfortably close to vehicle traffic. Occasionally, cars drive through the pond and spray water onto the bike lane and sidewalk. Third, there's a bus stop on each side of Avondale at Northeast 85th Place, but there's no crosswalk there. In 2016, city council approved a plan to signalize this intersection and install marked crosswalks to increase pedestrian safety. But that has not happened, and pedestrians still risk their lives by dodging stop-and-go traffic, some even pushing baby strollers to get to the other side of the street. Fourth, at 180th Avenue Northeast and Avondale, there is a crosswalk with traffic signals. Some pedestrians feel that the wait time for a crossing signal is too long. Fifth, the noise from tires on the pavement and illegal exhaust systems makes conversation impossible while walking along Avondale. Rocks and unsafe debris pose hazards to cyclists in the bike lanes. Considering the numerous safety hazards and discomforts experienced by pedestrians and cyclists along Avondale Road, if you've not already done so, please take action to address these concerns and make Avondale Road a safer, more accessible, and multimodal thoroughfare for all community members to enjoy. Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Yoder, then Leah Ellis, then Amani Ali, then Kyle Piper.
Hi, Council and Mayor and Attorney. I came here pretty much unprepared, totally, really, but lots have been going on as far as ruminating with my wife about all of this, and I'm holding back on my excitement over all of this until I hear back about what's going on with the homeless hotel up in Overlake. I think that'll be like a litmus test of what we might have down here in four years. So, I hope that we get transparency on how that's going on there. I know that the, it's a different provider, I don't know if we can find out, it's hard to get the information that we need, and we're counting on council, and especially the mayor, to give us the information that we need so that we can try to understand what's happening to our city. Once that, we need due process, we don't have due process, we haven't had it, we need to get the attorney involved. We've had way too much authority on the planning side of it, that's just, the momentum's been incredible. I have a mental illness, my family does, I have empathy, I'm struggling with trying to cope with all of what's going on. Once we open any of these up, if we do, we need to have the services available, and the people, the provider, they're not offering that, they're not saying what they're doing, and they're not, they haven't approved what they can do, they say. So, I'll be back again, and this is, you know, Anderson Park, we talk about that, I mean, that's something that is really frightening. Anyway, thank you, I'm done.
Next, we have Leah Ellis, then Amani Ali, then Kyle Piper, then Sean Moyer.
Good evening, my name is Leah Ellis, and I was here just, feels like just a little while ago, talking to you guys about decisions that the mayor made, that the council didn't know about, and things that were pushed to, pushed in through the cloak of COVID. And I'm very frustrated to have to be here again with you guys not listening, not allowing people to talk, not allowing yourselves to listen. I'm so frustrated that the city of Redmond does not have representatives who listen, and it's time that you guys start. So, I sent a letter, and I got a canned response, so I'll just read it, since I didn't come prepared, I came for my job. By the way, I'm a taxpayer for more than 30 years. I'd love a rebate, I didn't get anything from free. I support my child, who is a substantive... I support my child, who is a substance abuse victim himself, I understand the complications. I also know as a mother that giving things to him did not solve the problem. Consequences solve the problem. And they were tough for parents, I'm sure they're tough for the city, and they're also tough for the child or person who's involved. So, the city council and mayor recently made a decision to transfer a parcel belonging to the city of Redmond to Plymouth Housing. As a legal voter residing in Redmond, I request that you immediately rescind your decision to transfer this property. There is no open request for proposal, nor proper vetting of this transaction. I believe that if the city owns an asset, they should sell it on behalf of the taxpayer in order to receive the greatest return on investment. The city of Redmond should not be giving away assets when residents are being taxed out of their homes due to regulations and taxes imposed by local county and state government. This parcel belongs to the taxpayers of the city of Redmond, and as such, transferring the property without proper input from owners of this property is akin to theft. You should, you have made it clear that you are not interested in holding public hearings in accordance with RCW thirty-six dot seventy B dot one seventy and RCW thirty-six dot six seventy B two hundred. You allowed the purchase of hotel located in Redmond under the cloak of COVID, what is the status of that property? I drove by it, it seemed to be closed. Why is it necessary to give away a property that is owned by our citizens to accomplish what that hotel was supposed to accomplish? At the time, I think there were less than five homeless people that could be housed in that property, that lived in Redmond. The taxpayers demand answers and accountability on the project. As stated in the city rules of procedures, as council members, you have a duty of care. Avoid any behavioral omissions that could reasonably be foreseen to cause harm, and you've not done it.
And in conclusion, next, we have Amani Ali, then Kyle Piper, then Sean Moyer, then Li Pingzhu, then Sergey Konzalov. Amani?
Hello, I am here in support of the Plymouth Housing Project. I have lived in Redmond for twenty years, I attended Redmond Middle School and Redmond High School, and in that time, I have watched it grow from a suburb to what it is today. And the most relevant change that that has meant for me has been the slow realization that I can't afford to live in my hometown for much longer. For context, I make about ninety-eight percent of the area median income of Redmond, and I spend well over half my income every month on housing. Thirty percent of the median income of Redmond is twenty-one thousand dollars, and that is the threshold for applying for housing at the planned Plymouth Housing Building. Let me remind you, at ninety-eight percent of the median income, I spend over half my income on housing. To me, what that says is that without opportunities like this Plymouth project, people who make less than thirty percent of the area median income have no other chance to secure the stability of permanent housing. All of you know how unrealistic it is to imagine trying to afford any kind of housing in the Seattle area on twenty-one thousand dollars a year. In the Plymouth building, not only will residents who are exiting homelessness, who apply to live in, who apply to live in this building the same way that all of us have applied for apartments at some point in our lives, have a stable home for the first time in who knows how long, they will have access to in-house medical care, mental health care, transportation, and other services that many of us take for granted. Additionally, those who were at the approval meeting know that the people experiencing homelessness in Redmond will be prioritized for this housing, nobody ever said it would be a hundred percent of the people in this housing. I cannot see a better, more intuitive, or more evidence-supported way to help people exit homelessness and be set up to have a fulfilling life, the life we should want for everyone in our community, for all of our neighbors. So I want to profusely thank the council for making the quick, wise decision to move this project forward in Redmond. I've heard a lot from folks saying that you need to represent your constituents, we elected you in part on the platform of affordable housing, and you are absolutely following through on that promise. You'll remember, at the meeting in late February, there were many people with this same sentiment, so while I know that you have a lot of anger and fear out here tonight, I know that's not the majority of Redmond, because at the last meeting, Redmond made me very proud with their vehement support for the project. The clapping and booing tonight can't drown out the support we have seen for this project. I'll leave you with this, we, being my family and friends and many others, want supportive housing in Redmond. Thank you.
Next, we have Kyle Piper, then Sean Moyer, then Li Pingzhu, then Sergey Konzalov, then Jeff Bianchi, maybe? Kyle?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that I am, I want to add my voice to those in support of the Plymouth Housing Project. Members of this council were elected on the platform of supporting affordable housing, they received my vote and the votes of many others on that issue, in part. I just want to thank you for sticking to that, representing those of us who voted for you. You'll have my vote again in the next election cycle if you maintain your support for this. Thank you.
Next, we have Le, Le, excuse me, Sean Moyer, then Li Pingzhu, then Sergey Konz, Sergey, please let me know what your last name, how to say that, and then Jeff Bianchi, and then Viment Dennis, I'll get it someday.
Good evening, I'm Sean Moyer. Thank you for letting us have a second chance to speak, because a few weeks ago, everybody did have the opportunity. I have been, I have lived in Redmond for, since nineteen seventy-one, so fifty-three years, and I am in vehement support of the Plymouth Housing Project. I, at one point in my life, did experience homelessness, I did not sleep on the street, I had all my belongings in my car, but I depended on the graciousness and the giving nature of the people who I went to church with, and went around from house to house for about a year and a half while I gathered myself. Without that kindness, I would not have been able to pull myself back together. Everybody needs a chance, every human person deserves a place to live, a place to call home, and I hope that you won't be bullied by the fear mongering that you've heard here tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Li Pingzhu, then Sergey Konz, I'm sorry, the writing is a little challenging. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to express my concern. So I first strongly oppose the lack of transparency and democratic process in allocating public land purchased with public tax money, but without adequate and sufficient communication with the public. And furthermore, I'm actually really support helping people in need. My family is a regular donator to the charity activities in my church, and, but the issue tonight is not regarding support people, is actually raised by the extremely low bar from the Plymouth Center. That bar will only attract drug addict, alcohol addict, or even sex offender to group in that building. But all those behaviors will never really and truly, genuinely bring a human being back to a normal life. And also, I've been living in east side for over a decade, Seattle already set example for us. By getting free stuff will never stop people change their bad behavior, it only will neutrate their desire to getting more free stuff. And also, one thing I forgot to make, I have a demand, the city council leader, Vanessa Crizer, you should resign or be removed from your position, because you didn't efficiently talk to public about the city's decision by allocating the land to just to a organization. Thank you.
Next, next, we have Sergey, Sergey Konzalov, Jeff Bianchi, Vincent, Dennis LaRocque, and Agnew An. Sergey, could you tell me your last name, sorry?
Yeah, my name is Sergey Konzalov.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for letting me speak. I lived here in Redmond for many years, fourteen, and I have three kids who all was born here. In fact, when I moved to US, I never changed the zip code, starting from apartment sharing to owning my own house. It's all here in Redmond, and I really love the city. So what I want to say is that no quick decisions are good ones, especially in public sector, it's not something to brag about. You can brag about it if it's a disaster, if it's real disaster, and when I say disaster, I mean natural disaster. I know that people these days are very easy with language, you can say disaster, but it means something else, so I want to make sure that we define things, and we put definition to terms, and language is very important here. And it's not my native language, so maybe you assume something when you say something, but it's not what I would understand. So it's really important, because of that, to get through this operational agreement with Plymouth through rigorous public debate and review process, so everybody can speak, so we can define terms, we can define what it's supposed to do and what problem it's supposed to solve. And I hear many suggestions today, how to improve things, how to improve situation, what we can do better, what we can do to improve safety, what we can do to improve, to make everybody happy and like help people, and I'm really, if you want to improve, we need to make sure that we, as a city, have a rules established for Plymouth, and we can make them do better for people. It's not a competition of hardship, it's never a competition of hardship, life is tough, and everybody goes through certain problems in lives, some people get it harder, some people get it easier. We never will solve every problem, so we need to make sure that we spend our money efficiently, and we set this rules for Plymouth, so Plymouth will spend this money efficiently. You can't just throw the problem over the board and make some other company to decide what we need as a public, as a city of Redmond. So finally, first, I really want you to not agree, not support this operational agreement unless we hear from public, and this goes through a rigorous debate. And secondly, I'm not sure how this decision was made to transfer this land so quickly. I also want to make sure that this decision is rescinded and went through rigorous request for proposal process, so everybody can speak up, and this decision is made based on what we really want to do for the city, not what we can do opportunistically, based on some today's, today's decision that may sound as a good decision, but long term may not be good for, neither for public, for city of Redmond, nor for the homeless.
In conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Jeff Bianchi, then Vincent, Dennis LaRocque, then I think Agnew An? Jeff? Jeff Bianchi? Jeff Bianchi? Vincent? Vincent, Dennis LaRocque, and then Agnew An, then Junhui Ki? Jeff?
Good evening, this is mayor, member of the council. I am Vincent DonilaRocque, I am a Redmond resident since twenty eighteen, and I'm also a housing provider. And actually, if I compare to those new ugly building you're doing, I'm kind of an affordable housing provider. I'm here today because I feel this city is going in the wrong direction. From suburb to city, I don't think it's the right way to go. I think what we are doing is we are importing all the mistakes from the city, and we are turning this place we like in a bad place like Seattle. The proposed low-barrier housing project is aiming a noble goal, but it raises a specific concern, especially with the location near Anderson Park and the Redmond Elementary School. But also, the big concern is the lack of the transparency in the decision-making process. I was there on February thirteenth, that was my first city council, because before that, I was not a citizen, so I did not want to participate to the community. I am now a citizen, I'll be able to not vote for you next time. After this decision, I wrote several emails to all of you, I had to send reminder to get responses. The response I get is, go to the webpage with the common questions. And to be honest, it is very short, what I found on this site, especially under the safety and security section. It says, no weapon policy. Good, very good, I'm happy about that. Nothing about drugs, that's the main concern of everybody here. So I'm, again, also calling to have a robust plan for the residents of this place, make sure they have requirements, strict requirements. I hope the police of Redmond will do something about it, because even last Saturday, I was biking with my kids downtown Redmond, and I can smell people smoking cannabis. Okay, it's not fentanyl, it's just cannabis, but what would it be tomorrow? So I urge the city council to carefully reconsider this decision, rescind the decision to give away this land. Again, this is taxpayer money, we are paying high taxes, I think you know about that, I own two properties in Redmond, so I do pay high taxes. And also, I think you will listen to all the comments you got tonight, I think you understand how upset people are about this decision. I'm a new citizen, I'm a quite new resident in Redmond, but honestly, I'm very upset about what you did in February. Just two weeks to make this decision is a shame. Thank you for the council member Anderson who voted against.
Next, we have, I think it's Agnes An? Agnes An? Then Junhui Ki? J U N H U I?
Hi, my name is Simon Preet, and I live next to Anderson Park. I support housing the homeless, I think it's a noble cause. However, and also, the city council members are elected officials. The decision on Plymouth Housing, though, makes us think otherwise. The project is next to elementary school, Anderson Park, where kids play. My opposition is the opaqueness of the process, and the lack of transparency in the entire process that is being carried out. The land transfer decision and the housing project the city council gave without any public opinion. I oppose this project for mine and the safety of all of Redmond families. I demand transparency and ask the council to rescind this land transfer decision and take public comments and opinions in consideration, and move this out of Cleveland Street. Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Lambert, then Helen Sun, then Tammy Waddell, then Linda Cole Weaver. Kathy?
Good evening, my name is Kathy Lambert, I've lived here for forty-two years, and I came prepared with a speech, but I'm going to comment on what I've heard tonight, because much of what I said was said by Lisa Tracy and Yolanda with a beautiful Russian accent. So ditto to theirs. But I want to tell you that somebody asked about Seattle, I mean, about Redmond, sometimes I get them confused. There was a lot better safety and cleanliness. There was no discussion as we watched our city grow. I think there was around thirty thousand people when I first got here, and now, during the nights or the days, there's between seven hundred, seventy thousand and a hundred. But we didn't call each other nimbis, or use hateful words like hate, or dehumanizing each other, or fear mongering. We didn't use those kinds of words back then, because everybody coming was a new neighbor, and they were going to live with the standards of Redmond and abide by the laws. And because we focused on the basic rules of government, we didn't have all these things happening. Next, Leah, I'd like to say that there is a huge difference between affordable housing and supportive housing. Affordable housing, we don't have, so you'll have to figure that one out. But supportive housing is what this is, and this was given by property that you and I paid for in two thousand and nineteen, for five point five million dollars. You decided you needed it in two thousand and nineteen. Were you not doing the right research that four years later, you can give it away? You didn't ask any of us if we wanted five point five million to be given away as a gift, and I think that that's important, that we should have had that opportunity. And I think that that's important, that we should have had that opportunity. As far as Hope Link, I served on the Board of Hope Link through three different directors. I wrote many of the laws for that because I was there with Dorian Marchionne, the founder. That is a lovely institution that has helped many, many people in this area. Why? Because they have rules. This does not have rules. When you say that you don't have drug testing to be conducted, drugs will be allowed in the building, how are they going to get there unless they came across the streets where we are with our families and our children? Other than lifetime registered offenders, all sex offenders are eligible. If you've looked at any of the data on recidivism, on sex offending, it's quite startling and there's some things about that that I had to research in my occupation earlier. And other than meth producers who were convicted in the past five years, all drug producers are and drug dealers are eligible to live in this facility. Well, with the courts backed up, you pretty much didn't get convicted of much. So that kind of opens the place for everybody. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming out again. Many of us were here February 13th and actually, I'd like to tell you, I was appalled. 28 years I've sat through community meetings.
In conclusion?
Okay. I would be happy to tell the people later, the rest of my speech, but I think you need to watch out for open public meeting violations.
Next, we have Helen Sun, then Tammy Waddell, then Linda Cole Weaver, then Keith Weaver, then Danny Lamb. Helen Sun? Helen Sun? Tammy Waddell? Tammy? Don't see her. Linda Cole Weaver? Linda? Linda Cole Weaver? Keith Weaver? Keith Weaver? Danny Lamb? Great. After Danny Lamb is Yu Yan and then Tricia Fernandez?
Hi, thank you for your time this evening and listening for all of us, all our concerns. I've been a resident of Redmond for almost three decades and what concerns me is the lack of transparency and not allowing the valuable input from the key leaders of the community nor the public at your special meeting where the approval of the public land transfer took place is alarming. This decision does not serve the best interests of the city and the residents and shows a disregard for us by failing to confront the tough questions regarding the use of our tax dollars. It is a sad reality that drug problems and crime do go hand in hand. It is not a matter of if, but when we will see the negative impact on this community. We don't have to look too far except, just look at Seattle for example. A once thriving, vibrant city is now littered with crime and seen prominent businesses fleeing because of their reckless policies implemented there. This is not fear mongering as many would like to portray it, but we do have genuine concerns. I fully support affordable housing. We really do need it. But it should be for the whom it is truly intended for, and that is for the vulnerable seniors and fixed income or brave veterans and also low-income individuals. And if disability is not a requirement, then publicly post that on the website. But who is really going to end up in this low-barrier, five-story, 100-unit building on Cleveland Street? I am concerned that it will not be housing the targeted audience that you advertise. I encourage everyone to view the YouTube video by journalist Jonathan Cho from Discovery Institute highlighting the failures of the Plymouth Housing First Model Project in Seattle. It's truly an eye-opener and very informative. This is why the City of Kenmore rejected the Plymouth Housing Project. Now the can is kicked down to us. We are aware of the growing homeless crisis that exists. It is very complex, that requires very comprehensive solutions. I stand before you with a lot of compassion and empathy and I do support the homeless through programs and methods that actually work and do not feed the cycle of hopelessness and despair that this project is going to project. We want the homeless to succeed and transition into productive citizens. Please don't let Seattle's crisis become our crisis. So in summary, I demand that we have transparency and that you also rescind your decision on the public land transfer. And just do the right thing and that's all I ask from the city, for the city and the residents that live here. Thank you so much for your time and your service.
Next, we have Yu Yan and then Tricia Fernandez and Ian Both and Natalie Julian? Julian? Y-U-Yan? Are you Yu?
How do you spell?
It looks like Y-U-Y-A-N?
Yan Yun.
Yan Yun?
Ladies and gentlemen and esteemed members of the city council, I'm not here to debate the benefits or the harms of Plymouth Housing Project. I'm here to examine your actions on behalf of the citizenry. And by my account, you have failed to perform your duty as sworn representatives of the citizenry. And specifically, you have violated the natural law of reciprocity on the following four accounts. One, that in your fly-by-night committee meetings, you have failed to inform the citizenry of this impactful decision. And number two, you have forced the citizenry into an involuntary exchange, squandering our tax dollars without our approval for your personal political gains. Thirdly, you have imposed on the demonstrated interest of the people by introducing this blight upon our once beautiful commons. And fourth, lastly, that you have no ability to fully account for the consequences of your actions, let alone warranty those decisions to the limit of your restitution ability. In plain English, that means that you have no means of repaying the damages that you have caused. So you may consider this an indictment. And by the ancient common law traditions, if we, the people, the grand jury finds you guilty of these charges, that we shall deem you outside the protection of the law. And if you understand the full gravity of these charges, you should be quaking in your seats this moment. And that is all I have to say.
Next, we have Tricia Fernandez, then Ian Both, then Natalie Julian? Julian? I'm sure she'll correct me. Tricia Fernandez? Tricia Fernandez? Ian Both? Ian? And Natalie? Natalie? No, Natalie, that's the end of our in-person signups. And then we have one individual that has signed up to speak remotely, Joe Kunsler.
Good evening, Mayor Bernie. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. This is Joe Kunsler. Thanks for calling me this evening. Hope all is relatively well. Been watching your meeting from my home office, working away. A few quick thoughts here. First, I want to address a concern I've seen on social media about President Kritzler asking about a video of one of my favorite journalists, Jonathan Cho, being played. I want to stress through the council to the audience and the mayor and the city attorney that that was a legitimate question and necessary question. When the city council is working on developing new city comment, public, new items from the audience rules, sorry, I stumbled. It's really important that you guys get the rules right and look into all angles of this issue, especially with the nonexistent guidance from the city attorney general's office and the weak guidance from others. So that was a great question and I just want to publicly give my support to President Kritzler for asking that during this difficult time. I also want to stress to the audience and the council that not just with my concern about a certain Alex's malicious outbursts towards the council, I'm also concerned about the city council dev squad calling up the city council and harassing you guys. And I want you to have tools to be able to shut that anti-Semitic garbage down. Obviously, we didn't hear that tonight, but you know, when this city council dev squad's harassing city councils all around the country and certainly on the West Coast again and again, the city council's got to be in an offensive, understand the best offense is a good defense and a good defense is a good offense. So you need to build your defenses quickly and with urgency because the city council dev squad's already attacked Bellevue, they've attacked Tacoma, they've attacked Pierce County, they've attacked Watton County. The list goes on, but we don't have a lot of time and we're all tired. So I think I've made my point. As far as the housing, I don't really think my opinion from Skagit County should matter all that much, but for what it's worth, I think the city council members are trying to, are striving to do the right thing with the information before them. There is a housing crisis and I don't appreciate the person who spoke early on who said that this city council president doesn't listen. This city council president is very available to the public and very accessible and I don't appreciate the mistruth that she isn't because I know the truth that she is. Furthermore, in fact, this city council even has an Ombuds person that responds to emails to the council. So this council's done its democratic duty in due diligence here. However, I will be alert for any future public meetings violations because yours truly is also one of the engineers of the 2022 updated the Open Public Meetings Act, so I'll keep my eyes and ears open. Just as I'll keep my eyes and ears open against any future campaigning in the dyes. In conclusion, because I know we're all tired here. I hope we will have new city council rules soon and I want to appreciate the council. So thank you for your public service. I think my time's up, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Bye.
Our next item of business is the, excuse me, items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries seven to zero. With the passage of the consent agenda, we have reappointed several board and commission members and we have one member, I think he might have left though, Jim, James Kleppi, to be re-sworn in for the Parks and Trails Commission. I saw him earlier, but I think he might have, he might have left. So we will contact him to swear him in again. And I hope that, I want to thank all of the board and commission members who are willing to give up their volunteer time to spend it with the city. Our next item of business is Ombudsway reports for the month of February is Council Vice President Forsyth. Do you have any items to wrap up?
I do. I just had a couple of follow-ups on the tree code questions and we'll try to work with staff on some of the follow-up questions that we had from the community member. Some of them were rhetorical, but we'll work with on the ones that we can. Scheduled to meet next week with a community member about the gun club and the concerns there. Also met with a community member about accessibility issues, ADA issues, transportation issues a couple of weeks ago. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And for the month of March is Council President Kritzler.
We've received quite a few emails in the month of March so far. Definitely quite a few on Plymouth Housing, both in support and asking questions and then also opposed to the project. I have tried to get back to everyone. There are some that came in in the last two days that I have not gotten back to, but we have received hundreds of emails on this topic, so appreciate the public's patience. And have been directing folks since there has been some questions as people receive different types of information in response to their questions, to have all of that information really bubble up on our city's FAQ page. And just to let the public know as you're listening that we'll continue to keep that page updated with both opportunities for where the public can engage, since this is really the beginning of the process and it'll be years of development in which the public can engage on it. So we'll be making sure that that page stays robust and gives people the opportunities to learn about the project, as well as, you know, the information on the regulations that we already developed with many months of public input about two years ago. So just wanted to note that and have been sharing that out so that everyone can have the same transparent information on this topic. I have also been following up with folks that have asked about some of the issues around our Lime scooters and made sure and worked with the staff to be able to address any issues of accessibility related to that. And we also received an email from some residents who were excited to hear that a business, local business had reached a union agreement with their local workers. So you'll be seeing that more open again. Also received some questions about our rules on public comment. We will be looking at that topic in early April. We also received a question around the impacts of light at night on birds and migratory patterns, especially coming into this time. And so I'll be getting back to the resident with some information, but our team that works on a lot of those conservation issues and actually look at the impacts of artificial light at night on salmon are also going to be taking that in mind to look at the impacts on birds and the types of information we can share out with residents to remind them of ways to be a little bit more environmentally friendly in the way that they're doing their housing. And then, you know, we received quite a few questions about some issues that were going on with some recent crimes in downtown Redmond and a business there that has repeatedly had some issues and the staff has been working to follow up on that. We also received some questions about parking and some of the new requirements. One thing I'll flag that you probably saw in the city newsletter this week is that we do have a survey out to get people's feedback on parking in downtown since we recently in January instituted some new regulations around parking as a way to try to create actually more parking availability in the downtown area, but want to be able to get some input there and gather input from local business owners. Also received some questions from folks about our efforts around alternative crisis response and shared back with some community members that have been tracking it, the response we got from the Regional Crisis Response Program in response to our letter of inquiry to be interested to join that regional response. At the moment, we haven't yet progressed on it, but it seems like we're going to be able to get some more information on what that might look like or, you know, what else we might be able to do as we're developing our alternative crisis response work. Also received some questions around Derby Days and making sure that it can be, that tabling can be accessible for nonprofits and be at rates that are affordable. And got some information from our parks director that I'll share back with those who asked about that. And then finally, also received a request to join in the Festival of Colors that's happening at Marymore this weekend. So want to wish everyone who's celebrating a happy, holy and will look forward to joining in that festival this weekend with my family. Thanks.
Is that this weekend or next weekend?
There's one in Marymore this weekend and then there will be, I think, two different celebrations the following weekend at a couple other locations. So, yeah.
Any other Ombudsway items to report from our council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I had a call and I have a follow-up call scheduled tomorrow with a local architect who has feedback regarding fire sprinkler regulations in Redmond. Earlier today in our public safety meeting, we actually had our Fire Save Lost Report. We continue to see the impacts that fire sprinklers have in saving both life and property here in Redmond, which we are big fans of. Had a meeting with an advocate for housing and for renters and was able to walk through some of the work that the council is already doing and has done and plans to do in order to support housing affordability here in Redmond and had many continued conversations on the role of permanent supportive housing and our overall housing strategy here in Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Ombudsway items? Councilmember Nueva Kamina?
Tomorrow I have a meeting with several of the families that participate in baseball at Hartman Park that they've got some concerns and wanted just to lend an ear to their parks chair. And so I'll be learning more about their concerns tomorrow.
Thank you. Any others?
I do, I failed to do this. I really do want to thank all the community for coming out. I know that my planning, planning community development director was taking notes and so some of those items that people had concerns about, we can talk about more as we work on the agreement with Plymouth Housing as that moves forward. on the agreement with Plymouth Housing as that moves forward. So I appreciate everyone's sharing their thoughts about all of that.
Next, we have committee reports. Councilmember Slahudin?
Thank you. So I have a few committees that I participated in. Right before this, we had the Public Safety and Human Services Committee of the whole where we had a few action items, some of which were taken off the agenda, but these included an amendment to the Redmond Municipal Code, an approval of a contract with a law group, an approval of a five-year contract with Force Metrics, which was removed from the agenda. We'll get some more information from Police Chief Low. And then a few, acceptance of connecting housing to infrastructure program chip grant, which was moved to our April 2nd meeting. Then we had a few presentations, the 2023 Thrive Annual Report, a Fire Save and Loss Q4 Report from our fire department, a budget process monthly update from our budget director and a DEI program by monthly status update. I also had my first One Redmond Foundation meeting last week, which was a great meeting. Had an opportunity to meet the entire team. Got some staff update, event update, grants updates and community facilities update as well as an update on the Bellwether Project in Overlake. I wish I could provide a lot more information, but that was very rushed and so I'll be forwarding the presentation to you because we ran out of time in the meeting. And in terms of our ETP meeting, which was, I believe, a week and a half ago, we convened in person at Redmond City Hall, myself, Council President Kritzer and Council Vice President Forsythe. We had a great meeting talking about really getting to know one another across our different communities. Some of the presentations that we got in the beginning were from Metro and their electrification work as well as from PSRC and launching a regional transportation plan to be adopted in 2026.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports for this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. At the Growth Management Planning Board, we just had two informational briefings this month. One was on Puget Sound Recovery. I think for the, for the city of Redmond, I think the emphasis, the big takeaway there is the continued work that we're doing here in the city of Redmond, which is, you know, we don't have a shoreline, however, we have all of these tributaries flowing into Puget Sound. So was able to, to see some of the impact of some of our street sweeping pilots and things like that and how that is absolutely connected to Puget Sound Recovery. We also had a briefing from some childcare and early childhood education advocates around Joint Base Lewis McCord and some of the recommendations that they have for cities who are looking to provide more childcare opportunities. I also, we did not have a representative to the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee this month, however, I have been appointed and will begin to serve on an ad hoc committee that is going to take a look at the operating norms for the Public Issues Committee. So for those who have served previously on that committee, certainly looking forward to your feedback as we look at updating how our voice can be shared more with the SCA Board moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee meetings. Council Vice President?
Thank you. Councilmember Slahudin and I just returned from Washington DC for the National League of Cities Conference where we heard from President Biden, Pete Buttigieg and many, many others about the issues that are facing our nation, including affordable housing, infrastructure, a lot of the things that we talk about in this room and we are attempting to solve. We had great meetings with Representative Del Benet where it was, we just mostly shared a lot of our thank yous and heard about the issues that are facing them right now in Congress. We also heard from Senators Murray and Cantwell and had some great opportunity to hear a little bit longer from both of them and heard about, I actually ended up having a further conversation with Senator Cantwell at the airport because she was on my flight. So I got to kind of promote us a little bit more there as well. And then I additionally met with a representative from Etna who was there to hear about the health concerns in all of our communities. So I got to share many of the things that we have heard in this community with a direct representative for healthcare.
Great. Thank you. And it was lovely joining you just for a day or so. So I'm so glad you both could go. Sounds like a very fruitful, fruitful trip to DC. So thank you so much. Are there any other committee reports? Council President?
This is kind of in-between committee report and Ombuds, I think I forgot to mention it, but just wanted to say on Sunday, I was able to join along with a few other council members at the Muslim Association of Puget Sound at their interfaith iftar dinner. And it was, it was a really beautiful event and just want to, want to thank them for making that space that was really focused on bringing together people to find their shared humanity and to learn from each other. And I found it to be really wonderful and want to wish everyone celebrating a happy Ramadan.
Thank you. And I just wanted to share that not only did I have the opportunity to go to NLC and I'm a vice chair of the Community and Economic Committee there as well. So that was great to hear from people around the country and also got to hear about the great grant that Redmond received through NLC to do some work. So it was always, it's always nice to hear good things about us. I also had an opportunity to go to Florida and Miami Beach for a climate conference where I represent on the Steering Committee for Climate Mayors. And so we got to hear from experts from around the world about climate change and about the work that's being done and the work we need to do and more to come on that. But it was a really great opportunity and I'm excited to share all that with Jenny Leibach and the rest of you to see what we can do to make sure that we're saving our planet. So that was pretty exciting. With that, any other committee reports? Anything else? Anything else to report? We do have an executive session, so I want to ensure that anyone, if they wanted to report anything out like they would normally do at the end of a meeting, they do it now. Like if anything to share for the good of the order because we'll go into executive session and then we will come out and have possible voting. So is there anything else anyone wanted to share for the end of the night?
Okay, great. Well, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have an executive session, we have two executive sessions, both for 20 minutes to discuss potential litigation for 20 minutes each. The, right now, I'm going to make me do the math again. I'm going to give us a little bit of time to get in an executive session since we've been here a bit of time. So we will start the executive session at 9:45 and we will be out of executive session by, we have 20 minutes each, so that will be 10, gosh, 10:20, 10:30, 10:20? I can't do math tonight, it's too late. Let's say 10:20 and we will adjust the time if need be. And with that, we will be going to executive session.
And we are back from executive session. We had two executive sessions. Do we have a motion for the first executive session?
I move the council authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Fields.
Is there a way to identify which one we're voting on because we talked about two?
Yes, this is the first one we talked about in executive session.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is that any other comment?
No.
All right, great. I'm going to attempt, I'm going to try a voice vote. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have our second executive session. Council president?
I move the council authorize the mayor to sign the participation agreement with the Washington State Attorney General's office for the Johnson &amp; Johnson opioid abatement settlement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. And the motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great night.